Our neighbors are out to get us because we are not out to get our neighbors. And finally, Lord, help us see through a lens of love that though times may be tough, those solutions may be elusive and may the season that we're living through be longer than we have expected. May we still have patience and love for one another that we might support and care well for the well-being of each other and for the well-being of our city. Thank you, Lord, for hearing these prayers and for all of our prayers. We ask them in your eternal name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much Reverend Daho. That was beautiful. And at this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Danny Curran to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Curran. At this time, we will entertain adjustments to an approval of the agenda. We have one item that was included in our agenda packet that is a memo from Mary Yount, our downtown development director, and which Alan Thornton sent information out to the board with, I believe it was yesterday morning, explaining that we would like to add this to the agenda. This is to accept a memorandum of understanding from BAND NC Rapid Relief Grant, a grant of $5,000 to the City of Oxford. We'll read the detail later, but what is the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am, I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion to make Forest Road and Parker a three-way stop and to make Forest Road and Tranquil Drive a four-way stop. If I could add that for discussion at the end.
Okay, so I'm just going to write this down to make sure I've got it correct. A discussion to make Forest and Parker a three-way stop. Is that correct, Commissioner?
That's right.
And what was the other intersection that you wanted to make?
Forest and Tranquil.
Forest and Tranquil, okay. Four-way stop, okay. So we have the item that Commissioner Curran brought up to discuss those, the intersections of Forest and Parker and Forest and Tranquil to be added for discussion. And we also have whether to accept the memorandum of understanding for the Rapid Relief Grant. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda with these two items? Or is there anything else that should be added to the agenda for discussion?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the agenda with these two items added. Any further discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, I will take the approval by roll call. And Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Gilreath. Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges. Commissioner Bullock. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your attention to that. At this time, as you know, we discuss that we've approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for our ethical standards for board members and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct among those that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any members of the board know of any conflicts of interest or appearance of such with respect to matters before the board tonight. If any of you do know of any conflict of interest or appearance of such, please say so at this time. Okay, let the record note, no conflicts. And at this time, our first delegation is the Yard of the Month to Dawn and Laura Fick of 107 West Quail Ridge Road. And, um, hang on. And it's an absolutely beautiful house, and I've just gotten a text message. So, Madam Clerk, can you make sure? I think there are some people in the waiting room to be admitted that have an intent of speaking during public comment. That's, I apologize, that's what I just.
There's no, nobody in there.
Okay, then maybe they're already on. Never mind. I apologize for that. Just, it's kind of hard going through the message thing. So, Dawn and Laura Fick, and I know that you, I saw you, there you are. Wonderful. So 107 West Quail Ridge Road, they have beautifully gorgeous landscape beds, especially if you think that we are already on an October 13th. And beautiful impatiens, multicolored all along the front of the house. They have mums and other potted things on their steps and by the garage and beautiful climbing vines on their, on their lamp post and on their postal box post. I mean, it just is absolutely gorgeous. And Mr. Fick, I have to ask you, what are those beautiful blooming bushes with the orange blossoms?
Well, I really need to give all credit to my wife, and she is on the call. She dialed in by telephone. So Laura, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
So what are those gorgeous plants with the orange blossoms?
So that is actually, it's a, it's in the lantana family, but they are a shrub that we've had for many years in our family that we've passed down. And they, they are perennial that comes, that we have moved and split various times, and we've moved them house to house. And so it still seems they get larger and larger each year. Need very little maintenance and flower all, flower all the way through Thanksgiving.
Yeah, oh, well, they're amazing. Everybody needs to go by 107 West Quail Ridge Road because they're quite unusual. And anybody who knows me knows that I'm not particularly brilliant when it comes to growing anything. So you have my deepest admiration and thanks for such, doing such a beautiful job with your yard. It's just wonderful. So we do have a certificate that reads, has a picture of the yard and says, "This certificate is awarded to Dawn and Laura Fick of 107 West Quail Ridge Road in recognition of your valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community." We also will have for you a licensed place for your car, and it doesn't show up on my thing that says Oxford, North Carolina, Green and Clean, as well as Looking Back Book written by Louis Bowling, 200 Years of Oxford History. So I will be sure to come by your house and drop those off for you. And then we also are having our drawing because it's a six-month season. We're having a drawing for a little bit of prize money in downtown dollars, and we're going to do that right now. We have a number of winners, four winners at $15 and then one at 25 and one at 75. So if you'll hang on, our very first winner, $15, is Lucy Clayton of 217 Wilmington Avenue. Are, there you go. Second winner, Dawn and Laura Fick of 107 West Quail Ridge Road. So $15 downtown dollars can be spent in a number of stores in downtown Oxford any way you choose. So it gives you some flexibility and keeps, keeps supporting our downtown merchants. Another $15 downtown dollars goes to Jay and Diane Discher of 102 Dove's Road. And the last one for $15 goes to Cynthia Jones of 304 Peace Street. Then we have one gift certificate for $25, which goes to Winston and Nancy Brooks of 600 Sunset Avenue. And the last one to win $75 of downtown dollars is Ann Cook of 305 Broad Street. So let's give everybody a round of applause. And we thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Fick, for doing your part to help keep Oxford beautiful. And we hope you'll tell others that they should keep working at it too because the prettier our town is, the more wonderful it is for all of us that live here and more appealing it is for people to come take a peek. So I just want to thank you so much for doing your part to making an impact on, on Oxford.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the whole board for the recognition.
Absolutely. We appreciate it. And we'll bring a sign by to put in your yard for the rest of the month of October.
That's right.
Okay, thanks so much. And at this time, is our fire chief on? Looks like he might be on. Is that Chief 100 mobile? Is that, is that my fire che, our fire chief?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, we're sorry that we are doing this remotely rather than in person, but I am going to go ahead and read the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. And then we also observe the entire month of October for fire prevention. And I do want to thank you for all the hard work that you and your staff do to keep the residents of Oxford safe. We so appreciate it. So, City of Oxford, North Carolina, in recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 4th through 10th, 2020, serve up fire safety in the kitchen. Whereas Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire, which burned from October 8th through 10th, 1871, destroyed one-third of four square miles of the city of Chicago, left 100,000 homeless and killed nearly 300 people. And whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, home fires killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, with the Oxford Fire Department responding to an active fire called the equivalent of once every three days. And whereas the leading cause of home fires is cooking, with more than two of every five homes fires starting in the kitchen, approximately one-third of them resulting from unattended cooking and two-thirds from the ignition of food or other cooking materials, which is oftentimes grease. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fires themselves. And whereas one should never throw water on a grease fire, but should cover it with a lid, baking seat, sheet, or use plenty of salt to smother the flames, turn off the source of heat, never try to move the pot, and be sure to leave the premises if unable to control the fire. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than from being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Oxford residents should never leave the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, always keep things that can catch fire away from the stove pot top and maintain a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas to protect the beloved little ones. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and having working smoke alarms will cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire in half. And whereas Oxford's Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. And Oxford residents should be responsive to public education measures and able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Now therefore, I, Jacqueline Vanderhorst-John, Mayor of the City of Oxford, along with the Oxford Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Oxford 2020, excuse me, October 2020, as Fire Prevention Month and October 4th through 10th as Fire Prevention Week for the City of Oxford. We urge all in our community to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices now and always, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Oxford's Fire and Emergency Services. In witness thereof, I appear to set my hand this, the 13th day of October 2020. And so Chief, it goes without saying how much we appreciate you. Is there anything else that you would like to add?
First, I'd like to apologize for the video. We're having internet issues, so I had to pick voice over, or video. So that's where we're at right now. But yeah, thank you for the support. Thank the North for support, also the city manager and all the citizens. Like, we are here for the community. We are doing things a little different this year because of COVID. We're having to do Zoom trends, and we're having to have smaller groups. And we also are doing our volunteers, the pay staff, the same way because we can't get out and do the training we normally do. So we have passed out our education materials to the schools. The teachers will pass them down. And we're going to get our message out as best we can using social media and phone calls and Zoom meetings. So if anybody needs us, as always, call us. And we still have our smoke detector program in place, and we're glad to get out there and get those devices to the people that need. I'd rather pass out a thousand smoke detectors and visit one home for the reason. So thank you for what you do and thank the, thanking everyone around you.
Absolutely. And we thank you and we thank all of your staff. And we will get a copy of this proclamation over to you. And just thanks for your continued diligence. And again, I know I reiterate for the board how much we appreciated your presentation recently on all the work that you've done to make sure that our fire department is as highly functioning as possible, and it makes us all very, very proud. So thank you. At, at this time, we move on to the public comment portion of our agenda where people may speak on agenda as well as non-agenda items at this time. And so Ms. Bowen, I was under the impression we had somebody that had reached out to you and wanted to speak on, in public comment. Is that true?
No, ma'am. I don't have any, I didn't have anybody.
Okay, um, let me at least, because it is a little bit, I, so I, I know that Pastor Darby is on the line. Pastor Darby, had you intended to speak during public? Oh, there we have Pastor Darby and Mr. Wertham. Were you not able to sign? Did you want to speak during public comment tonight?
Just briefly, Mr. Wertham will do most of the speaking. I'm just here in support of him tonight.
Oh, so let me, let, just give me a moment then. Let me check with the board because, of course, everything is different. And normally what we require folks to do is to let our city clerk know ahead of time that they're going to try to zoom in to speak during public comment. So my question for the board members, we, even though Mr. Wertham has not signed up in advance, would you allow him to speak during our public comment? So you can do a thumbs up. I can do a roll call. Thumbs up, I'm getting one, two, three, four, five. Looks like we're good to go with Mr. Wertham speaking during public comment. So you have five minutes, sir. And I apologize for any awkwardness that, because I'm not very good at spotting people on my screen. But take it away, Mr. Wertham. We'd love to hear what you have to say tonight.
Thank you all so much. And I do apologize for showing up on your screen as Mr. Darby, but I am he and he is me. And, and I was on earlier, but having microphone problems. And, and so I ran up to his space to, to be able to, to share just a moment if I could. I do apologize for not following the proper procedures. It's been one of those days, but I'll be brief. Was excited to see that the Oxford Housing Authority was mentioned in the, in the possibility of the city's effort to bring Wi-Fi to downtown Oxford and, and the possibility of extending affordable Wi-Fi to the Oxford Housing Authority. It's always good and exciting to see the Oxford Housing Authority's name in print, especially when it's something positive and, and moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to, to thank the city for the forethought in, in considering that, that as a possibility. Affordable internet is a major issue in, in, in our area and in many areas throughout the city of Oxford as families and, and children are struggling to, to be educated online and do job searches and other things. And so we have found since March of last year that it has been a uphill battle in trying to make sure that families have affordable internet. And we have five apartment complexes and all for families, one for senior citizens, and have found the need to be just as great for our seniors because a lot of them are grandparents. And during the time of the coronavirus, they provide a place for children to, to be where our parents work. Again, we are fortunate to have many of our families working and struggling to, to pay the higher internet bills. But we do have quite, quite a few families with internet. And about currently about 99 children somewhere on an average that don't currently have internet in the home. We are fortunate, Grand County Schools is providing one bus for our communities and some other internet hotspots at some of our apartment complexes. But there is a large number of children that are underserved. And we were, again, excited to see that the city is considering this grant and the opportunity to, to bring those services to, to the citizens of downtown Oxford and also our residents at the Oxford Housing Authority.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And I know this is unusual, but do, do any members of the board have any questions that they want to ask Mr. Wertham? Okay, I just, well, thank you very much, Mr. Wertham and Mr. Darby. We appreciate your zooming in today and offering your comments. And we certainly agree that we want to make sure that every child, if at all possible, has equal access to opportunity during what are the most unusual and complicated learning times that we've experienced, at least in my lifetime. So thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your speaking up tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank all of you.
You bet. And with that, I'll go forward to item four, which is new city business. And item A is to consider adopting the City of Oxford Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan, including the Kit Hicks Complex Plan, was presented at the August 11th, 2020 Commissioners Meeting for Comment. Suggestions from the meeting, including Hicks Complex Plan adjustments and park search areas have been incorporated into the final plan. The Hicks Complex Plan is incorporated into the final comprehensive master plan document. Staff recommends adopting the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Before we begin, I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Generally, when there's business, doesn't the chair of the committee present the item?
You know, you are more than welcome to take that. And I guess because we didn't, I, this, it's been a couple of months since we had a recreation committee meeting. I am happy for you to take it away and speak more at length on this item.
No, I'm, you already presented. I just was, just for a point of clarification, but being that you did say this, I would like to ask one question. Since the agenda came out, have we had any modifications to the plan? Of the, of the, Ms. Cheek, any modification to the recreation plan?
Since, since the meeting we had in, was that September? No, August, there were some changes based on those conversations. But since the agenda came out the other day, there have been no changes.
Could you highlight those changes for me, please, just for a point of clarification?
Yes, um, so one of the pieces that was changed, sorry, I might have to look at my book, but the Hicks Complex Plan was changed to show the proposed Hicks Aquatics and Recreation Center. There were some numbers given for, there was a question, I think, about the, this wasn't actually in the plan, but it was just the answer to a question about what the existing sizes of like the playground and the skate park are and what was proposed. So if anybody has that question, I can certainly answer that. The search map was adjusted based on the comments, the search map for future park facilities and, or parks. And I think that's about it. There weren't significant changes. There was, other than the Hicks piece and, and that. So, I mean, there are significant changes, but there weren't a lot of changes, I guess I should say.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for letting me clarify.
All right. And on that note, so the basic change to the Hicks Gymnasium just said that it would just be an aquatic center based on just wording and wording alone. So we haven't, not speaking directly to you, Ms. Cheek, just in general, we haven't received a sketch per se or either blueprints of the actual gym. We just have a map. So basically, all they're saying to me is this is a proposed. So I don't think that that is sufficient enough, to be honest with you. We have been talking about a swimming pool downtown Oxford. I was speaking to one of my fraternity brothers for 60 years. My mother's been in Oxford 50 years, and we have been talking about a pool. We have yet to have that pool, and we do not see where that pool is going to be. So I would like to offer mostly that we do not accept this downtown, this City of Oxford, Oxford Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan until we see the blueprints or drawing of a pool in it. That is in a form of a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So at this stage, this is just a very high-level sketch plan. So you don't, you don't dig down into the actual what's going to be inside a building and that sort of thing until you do a feasibility study, pro formas, things like that, which would be the, you know, the next step. This is basically saying this is what fits in that area. And then the other thing is the Hicks Complex Plan is just a small piece of the overall departmental master plan. So we can pull the Hicks piece out and deal with that separately, but that's going to be, that's a whole new pot of money, a whole new set of plans, that sort of thing. But this, this isn't intended to be that level. And I understand what you're saying, but we just wanted to make sure it was on this piece of the plan so that moving forward, we could do, you know, whatever the commission desires for that moving forward. But that's not quite at this stage or this level of, of the sketch plan for the Hicks piece specifically. That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your Pro Tem, does your motion stand as stated? Or are there any further thoughts based on Ms. Cheek's response to your motion?
My motion stands, but I'm sure others have commented.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tem to not approve the plan that is before us now until we have specific blueprints for a pool. Did I restate that correctly, Mayor Pro Tem?
A little for, I mean, that's fine for the wording, but what I'm saying is we need to see the specifics of it. Because right now, I mean, it's, you know, it's just a sketch. And I know that sketch costs more than, may cost some money, but I'm not quite sure how much. I don't have that with me in front of me. And to make the record, like she said, we did meet in September. So it had, what, August, it wasn't too far away. And I asked for it then, and I'm requesting it again now. So that my motion still stands.
Okay.
Make a comment, Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in support of what Mayor Pro Tem said, for as long as I've served on this board, you know, the time that I served at an earlier time and certainly most recently, it is correct that one of the biggest issues um it is correct that um one of the biggest issues um um for me as a commissioner and certainly other commissioners that have um come on the board and left the board um is a swimming pool. And um I I I I also feel like we we just need more specifics to to make sure that that's on the front uh side of this uh recreation plan. Um um because it, I'm telling you, we've we've gone years and years talking about swimming pools, but we just have not uh moved forward. I mean, we even are supposed to be funding a a swimming pool by putting aside money each year. Um so I I hope that um um everyone takes serious um the feelings of uh s- s- you know, certainly some board members, that a swimming pool for everyone is 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 definitely something that we uh want to see happen. Um and so um, you know, I I certainly support uh Mayor Pro Tem's comment.
Okay, so a yes, Commissioner Tovey.
Unmute.
You need to unmute, sir.
There we go. I'm sorry. As as I understand it, this is just the ten-year master plan, and it needs to be passed before we can get into specifics. And and that includes the pool. Am I, am I, am I wrong on that?
Well, there there, yeah, there are two completely separate items. We just, since we're doing it at the same time, the Hicks piece of the plan, the comprehensive plan is is department-wide, citywide. The Hicks piece is obviously specific to things, and this helps us moving forward, getting grants and things like that, to show that these are things that we want, you know, for the future.
Yeah, and I think we really should be looking at at the that pool downtown, but but that's that comes in specifics, right? We have to pass the plan first.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Field, yes.
Could it be the wording, or do we need do uh uh Mayor Pro Tem, do we need a specific uh plan?
Well, I would like to see, I mean, the wording is there, but I mean, let's be real, the wording has been there before, and it it it's not been prevalent or present. So I would like to see it specifically say this will be a swimming pool or aquatic center. You know, it says proposed. If you look at it carefully, it says proposed. So I'm not an attorney, but we have two on the line, and you have to be very careful with your words. So proposed might actually is three because Reverend Darby's still here. So you have to be very careful what you say because it might not actually happen. So no, I needed to say swimming pool, aquatic center. But my motion still stands.
Okay.
That's why I was asking about the wording. The wording versus a drawing? Or would you prefer both?
Well, I mean, you know, I'll be honest with you, Miss Field. The dog park is laid out, the skit, um the skate park is laid out, but that that is just a building there. It says nothing about a pool. So I'm concerned about that. Therefore, you know, that's why I feel so adamant the way I do. Because it's just, it's just like to simply just, let me just appease someone with some words, and that's not going to work for me.
Okay.
But you say that you want a blueprint of the building.
No, I I I don't necessarily say we have to have a blue blueprint, but it needs to be in the drawing, in the sketch.
In the draw, in the sketching.
In the sketch, what it is, what it's going to be. I know we can't afford a blueprint right now, but I I remember when I first came on the board, two thousand nine, when I was Recreation Chair, we sat down in the in the in the, I think it was the the um exercise room in the gym, and we had a plan, and we talked about the actual swimming pool then. So we've been talking about this, but I mean, we've been on the board, what is it, eleven and a half years? So yeah, I I need to see something besides talking about and keep pushing it on down the road, kicking that can, because it's in STEM by now.
Didn't, well, let me not say anything before any other board members make any comments.
Yeah, I got, I got.
Yes, sir.
We um you know, an aquatic center, it's a, it's a, it's a great idea. It's a lot of cities and towns that would love to have. Um but to me, is as a city commissioner, our responsibility to the citizens of Oxford is water and safe drinking water, sewer system, maintain our streets, provide police protection, provide fire protection. That's what we need to do first and foremost. This, the drawing that, I think it's thirty-two thousand square feet. Is that right?
Yes.
I mean, if if it's
So, yes.
Just look, if it's comparable to building a nice house, it's ten million dollars. Um, you know, we just found out we've got a the expanded water system going from forty million, sixty-five million, we're responsible for twenty percent of that. We've got to build a fire station if we get that little bit of growth out on Ninety-Six South and Fifteen. Um, police station, forty years old. As Commissioner Tovey said, it's fallen down. Uh and Mr. Thorne said, wasn't falling down, but we've outgrown it. It's got to be replaced. We've, we've got many things that we need before we need an aquatic center. I mean, and like I said, it would be great if we had comparable to what Henderson's got just to maintain it and operate it per year. It's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's sixty percent addition to what we ought to get on our recreation budget. That would add probably nine cents to everybody's tax bill just to, just to run it, not to build it. Um
Is that
Like I said, I think it's, it's great, it's a great idea. Everybody would love to have one. I don't know many towns of population of nine thousand that can afford. Henderson's population, they were seventeen to eighteen thousand when they built theirs, twice the size of Oxford.
Are you talking about the aquatic center, Commissioner Curran?
I am.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, you know, a aquatic center is fine, but just like their own on that sketch, it says a splash pad, it says a dog, an extension to the dog park, has a skate park. Why can't a pool be identified in the sketch? It doesn't necessarily have to be an aquatic center, because as you said, it's going to take four hundred thousand dollars to run that. And I understand that's something that's not feasible at the moment, but you know, take one of the ball fields or where there's a tree area and put a pool there. I mean, that's all I'm asking. That's, you know, did I ask for in August?
Are you saying an outdoor pool, sir?
That would be fine.
Okay, um because the the square footage is, you know, the footprint on the plan is what was what was important as far as making sure we could put a pool inside that facility, and that's why it's at the thirty-two thousand square feet. Um but you, and also in this level of the of the plan, you know, that building could turn into just a gym with some offices with a pool beside it, or that sort of thing, because you have that square footage mapped out. Um again, this is that, you know, high-level looking at at this piece of of property and what we can fit on it and things can move and um you, one of the, I think, one of the important things, and I want to make sure everybody knows that, is the comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan that's in front of you. It it does show from the survey and um uh speaking with the community and that sort of community engagement, that a pool is one of the, you know, the top um items
It is the top.
have asked for. Um and just kind of depends on what question was asked, um what people would support and that sort of thing. So I think that information, it's important to have that in this overall comprehensive plan, because as we look and build for the future, we see these are the things that our citizens would like to see. And obviously, you guys have to make that decision as to what, you know, what actually can get funded and that sort of thing. But um I would, I would like, even if we continue to discuss the Hicks piece, and again, that could change. I mean, e- everything on that can change. You you have to start with the sketch plan, and then um you know, a year from now or six months from now, whatever's decided, you start pulling out the pieces to see what can get constructed. If you start applying for grants, they want to see these items on the sketch plan. Sometimes you have to go back if there's, if you've all of a sudden decided you want to add a a ropes course, you know, you have to go back and get a new sketch plan so that you see that on your grant application, if that's what you're asking for money. So seeing that on that sketch plan is a good first step, because it does say aquatic center. If you went in and put a pool outside, because that cost would be, you know, uh I would think significantly lower, um you you've still got that aquatics piece on that plan. So we can pull the Hicks piece out of the master plan, but the master plan that's in, you can approve the master plan by itself, and you can approve the Hicks plan, you know, separate from that. Um but that would be no different if it were the Armory Master or Sketch Plan or or whatever. It just this was our core facility, and that's why it was kind of lumped in during this project, because we wanted to get this started.
And did I not recall from our meeting I in August that um because that's when the presentation was made by the consultant, correct?
Yes.
It was in August, that there was discussion about doing a feasibility study uh to to implement the things in which I was anticipating that it was during that process that there would be discussion when you're getting down to the nitty-gritty of what it would take, that, you know, there eh there might be some adjustment, but because on the, I guess, the top priorities, I'm looking on page eighty-two, figure seven, it the pool is right at the top, but it says indoor pool. So I would guess I was kind of thinking if we do a feasibility study and say, what would it take to do X, what would it take to do Y, it might be that at that point uh the board drills down and and, you know, maybe makes a shift and says, okay, we're we're not going to do an indoor aquatic center, because as Commissioner Curran said, even though indoor pool comes out top, what it would take to build and maintain is beyond our capacity, and then there would be adjustments. Am I misunderstanding or misremembering that part of the discussion?
No, that's correct. Um that that is the, that's the next step. Um and that I believe uh Mayor Pro Tem had asked about that in the last meeting as well. Um just kind, you know, basically saying some of the same things about wanting, seeing this so many times or hearing this so many times and it not getting done. And um I don't, I haven't come across even a sketch plan at this point that has a pool on it. Um so uh Mayor Pro Tem, I'd actually like to talk to you maybe sometime later this week or something, but um but getting it, so that's why it was important, I think, to get it on this initial, this very first step sketch plan, because of all the conversations in the past. And then, yes, um moving next would be into a feasibility study, and I believe um it was Commissioner Bridges that had talked about um how to, or, you know, something that was affordable for families and and people, anybody could go to it and that sort of thing. And you know, a piece of that feasibility study is a pro forma, so you can actually look at it and say, this is what we're going to build, this is how much we can um charge and and, you know, make this work or and you know, so there there are several steps in this process. So that we did not just put that on there to placate you to, you know, because you mentioned it, but we did want it to be seen in this overall sketch plan, because it was important um and has been discussed in, you know, in previous years. So again, this is a very base, very, very, very first step um of putting this on paper. Um so and actually having it approved by the commissioners and that sort of thing. I don't the old uh master plan, I don't remember seeing, there were no sketch plans in that. So there was no, you know, which you can do a master plan and not do a sketch plan. Sketch plans can always be later, as you're wanting to um to uh develop properties and parks and things like that. So um so this is the first step to having this on paper, moving forward with it, and then you have to, you know, if you want to do the feasibility study, and then, like you said, Mayor, this is that's when you get down to more of the things that the Mayor Pro Tem would like to see, and hey, what could we actually fit in here? Um, you know, does it have to be an outdoor pool? We can make that decision as well. Um so there, you know, we can look at doing hit, you know, redoing Hicks completely and putting a pool down there. I mean, so there things can move away from the sketch plan a little bit. That that is just your very, very first step, and then we have to decide what we can afford. So.
I appreciate you mentioning that 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 is the very first step. So I would like to see in the very first step a pool. Um and I think if everyone has not, I mean, made any comments, I'm ready. I'd like to call for the vote if there are no other comment.
Okay, are there any other comments from any other members of the board? Okay, with that.
Well, exactly. Uh go ahead, go ahead.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're, if we're concerned about the type of pool, I I thought part of the issue was that we wanted an an aquatic center, an indoor pool that was accessible to everybody within town, otherwise the Rutgers pool would suffice. So I want to just make sure that I'm understanding that that we just don't want a body of water. We really want it. The real issue here is you want it accessible, you want it within the city limits, and you want it so that it can be used year-round, is what I thought the goal was. Because if we back up to say we just want a pool sitting out there beside a building, we sort of have that. We just have a lack of accessibility to what we currently have.
That's why the first step of the sketch is important. I would like to see it in the sketch, that what we have. What we do have is something that is not accessible to everyone in the city limits, almost nearby in STEM. Um, you know, not not taking away anything from anyone. It's just, you know, we just keep kicking this can. So we're in Durham now. We were in STEM, now we're in Durham. We need to, I mean, we need to just get this done, to me, you know. Uh the way it looks like it's going, I'll probably be dead before the pool's built, but, you know, I'm gonna, my motion's still standing.
Okay, any other comments before I call the the vote?
So exactly, what's the motion?
Uh uh, I'll repeat the motion, and then Commissioner Bridges has a comment. The motion is to not accept the plan tonight until there is a plan for a pool, an outdoor pool included. Did I state that correctly, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it is to not accept the plant as it has been um it is, as it is before us in its current form. Now, Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Gilreath really expressed kind of what I was feeling. Um I will tell you, um all of us are getting older. Uh, you know, I I'm feeling aches and pains that I used to didn't feel, and and I simply feel like uh an aquatic center would not only benefit the youth in our community, but it would benefit the whole community. And, you know, we we're talking about how much development is going to come here, how many different um residential complexes we're going to have um and 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 developments we're going to have, and and that's why we're emphasizing, you know, improving our water and sewer system. Well, guess what? Uh folks that come in this area, they're going to want to have uh you know, activities available to them. And and, you know, as as a senior citizen, it would be nice to be to have a walkway around a pool where, you know, folks are swimming. And and so I see this as a uh benefit to the whole community. And, you know, the the elephant in the room is that although we have uh swimming pools that are closer to the middle of our community, they're not accessible to everybody. I mean, they're not. And, you know, it's nowhere around it. They're private, and um they don't want folk who don't look like them there. And so um, you know, I live in a neighborhood. And so, you know, I live in a neighborhood where my daughters, many years ago, they're grown adults now, wanted to swim. And I'll never forget the experience my wife had trying to sign up to the closest swimming pool to our house and how she was treated. And not only her, but other Black families. So I know that Mayor Pro Tem feels very strongly about this and I certainly feel strongly about. And if it's an outdoor swimming pool, fine. Just long as the kids there on Raleigh Road and other communities have someplace close by where they can get in some water and relax. And guess what? Even though we live in a divided country now, you know, maybe that will help some of our youth come together and do some things together. The bottom line is for our poorer community, for our Black communities, we don't have a swimming pool that is available to them. So I think that this board ought to push to make sure that we have a swimming pool that's located near our community so that everybody can swim together.
Yes, Commissioner Toby.
Right, I was, I was just wondering, as this is only an acceptance of a ten-year master plan, and I understand what Mayor Pro Tem is talking about. When you look at the map, it says inclusive playground, amphitheater, splash pad. But when it comes to the pool, it says proposed. So can't we just get rid of that word proposed?
Certainly.
Can we do that? Would that be acceptable so that we can get on and pass this ten-year master plan? And then we can talk about specifics later on when we're going through specifics. But just get rid of that word proposed? Would that be acceptable?
Well, I don't see proposed on the.
On the, on the map, it says proposed Hicks.
Right, I'm saying on the other items there, you actually see a sketch of the skate park. You actually see a sketch of the splash pad, but you don't actually see a sketch of where the pool is supposed to be.
You do, if you, please, please take a look at page ninety-one.
That's what I'm looking at, ninety-one.
Take a look at page ninety-one.
Yeah. That's what I'm looking at and it does say proposed. But all the others, it doesn't say, so.
And it's the same picture on page twelve.
If we get rid of that word proposed, then we could move on, accept the ten-year plan and then we can talk about specifics in the plan during the, also the next, whatever, you know. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, and the playground and those items, that's just kind of a footprint drawn, just like the building is. You don't actually see, you know, where the swing sets are going to be or if it's going to be a composite climber or, you know, what amenities are in the skate park and that sort of thing. And I think with the building, there's such, you know, that, that next step is such a large piece because you're actually working with an architect and things like that. So to do your, you know, all of your work as far as planning the interior of that building, that's why you don't see like a line or, you know, that sort of thing, like it would be a pool. But.
I, I understand, I understand Mayor Pro Tem's worry because everything else is there, but the word proposed. I thought if the word proposed is not there, then it can't, we can't go ahead and pass this master plan and then talk about specifics. I thought that would be a compromise.
Okay, wait a minute, Commissioner Bullock, please. Yes, sir.
My concern I have on this, and I'm not opposed to, you know, proceeding on this, is it seems like we've got two decisions being discussed at the same time. You know, whether it's going to be a pool, indoor pool, outdoor pool, or an aquatic center. And then the other is whether or not we proceed with this overall plan. So, you know, what are we really addressing here? It seems to me if we can get the plan approved with the understanding that maybe a feasibility study can start shortly after that, which would help to determine, is it going to be an outdoor pool? Is it going to be an aquatic center? What we can afford.
Right.
Or a pool with a bubble over it, a retractable bubble so you can have it outdoors in the summertime and go indoors in the wintertime and let the seniors do water aerobics and the high school kids do a swim team.
That is a way to phase an outdoor pool. I mean, to make it more cost effective, so, you know. But there again, we've got the space there in that footprint to do either the aquatic center or an outdoor pool. So.
So we, you know, Mayor Pro Tem, you've heard a lot of discussion and commentary. Does your motion stand as is to not, you know, I know Commissioner Toby suggested, would it help if we remove the word proposed on each of the two plans? I'm not sure if the word proposed is in the language, in the narrative, is it in the narrative, Ms. Cheek?
No, I don't think it is.
So it's just on the two concept plans? Would that be sufficient? Or does your motion stand, as you stated, to not entertain accepting the current plan as written until there is specific information about incorporating a pool into the map?
That is correct. So move, can we please call for the vote?
Okay, so I start with Commissioner Gilreath. Oh, Commissioner Fields.
Question as to the time of this implementation, how much time would it take to have this, have the, have the plan redrawn and the pool added? And the cost?
Well, there's not, that, we can't get a cost for it until we go to the next step, the feasibility study and that sort of thing. That's when you determine, what do you want? What, because it's not just the pool. It's the amenities around it and, you know, the locker rooms and different things like that are all pieces of that particular puzzle. So, I mean.
And that's what I asked for in August. Not to cut you off, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I asked for. Could we see that on the plan? And not just, let's talk about, could we actually see it on the plan?
I think she, I shouldn't speak for her, but my assumption was that when they sent the plan out again and then changed that structure to an aquatic complex, that that was addressing the desire to be sure a pool was part of the language. So that was how I was viewing it.
Yeah, and that, and my apologies if that was not, but that, that is how I was viewing that also because we're not at the point of actually drawing, you know, a square within that rectangle that shows what side the pool would be on. And my understanding from even the, the last conversation or the meeting was that it was an aquatic center and not necessarily an outdoor pool. But that again, was part of why we wanted to do a feasibility study next. But if I misunderstood that, I apologize. But that was, you know, we, we wanted to make sure it was on the plan so that, you know, five years from now or whatever, you could see that, that is what was proposed in that area. And all of this is proposed until it's built, but it's, you know, but we could definitely take the word proposed off. I'm really not sure why it's on that one specific building, but because I guess the building can shift a lot as well. So, and what you did with it or around it or whatever.
Okay, any further comments? And we're going to proceed with the vote, which is to, the motion is to not accept the plan as currently presented to us until we have a specific drawing that shows a pool. Commissioner Gilreath, how do you vote? Yay or nay? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You vote, you, you support not accepting the current plan?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Fields, how do you vote?
Yay.
Commissioner Curran.
I'll vote against the motion.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep track. Commissioner Toby.
unmuted, John.
Commissioner Toby, do you support the motion or vote against the motion?
Sorry, unmuted. I'm, I vote against the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bullock.
I'll vote against the motion.
Okay, and obviously Mayor Pro Tem, it's your motion for the record. You vote?
Yes, ma'am, no.
Okay. Okay, so the motion carries four to three with Commissioners Gilreath, Fields, Bridges, and Mayor Pro Tem Harris voting in support of the motion. And Commissioners Toby, Curran, and Bullock voting against the motion. And to reiterate, the motion is to not accept the plan as currently stated until we have more specificity in the drawing with respect to a pool. And, and if there is any further clarification, I guess, Mayor Pro Tem, I would invite you to have that, continue that conversation with Ms. Cheek and the manager to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Does that work?
Well, I think that's a conversation for everyone and not just me. We would be more than happy to schedule a Recreation Committee meeting because I'm not the only member of this board. But I'll get with Ms. Madam Clerk and we will schedule a Recreation Committee meeting.
Okay, that's fine. And then I just said with you to make sure that there isn't any misunderstanding with respect to your motion.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, everybody, for your engaging discussion. And thank you, Ms. Cheek, for your contributions and clarifications. We certainly appreciate that. And so at this time, we move forward to discussion regarding a possible official city poem. And Louis Bowling approached me. He wrote, "Looking Back: Two Hundred Years of Oxford History" in honor of Oxford's 200th anniversary. And he suggested, and that, and he suggested we consider adopting the poem "A Tribute to Oxford, North Carolina" on its bicentennial celebration, which was written by Dr. Helen Otho and is in the frontispiece of the book that he wrote. In Attachment 4B, you have his letter of support to adopt this, excuse me?
I would like to make a comment before, when you get finished.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So you have his letter of support as well as the poem. And he also suggested that with some discussion with Dr. Otho, who I see was on the call earlier, and she, oh, she's there, that he was thinking that maybe the full title be adjusted to just be called "A Tribute to Oxford." And so that's the information that you have. And Mayor Pro Tem, what would you like to say?
Yes, first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I contacted Dr. Otho and asked her to join us tonight because I think it's important that if you're going to make a change to an author's work, that you consult the author first. So, Dr. Otho, are you with us still? I see you in the corner.
Yes, yes, I am.
How are you tonight? So good to see you, beautiful.
Oh, I'm doing fine, thank you.
All right, glad to have you with us tonight. I'm sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Otho was here. I don't want to take over because that's not my topic, but.
No, 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 that's fine. And I don't think there was any intention. I, all I said was that the proposal by Louis Bowling was that we might want to consider the title, but that, of course, we would have that discussion directly with Dr. Otho if that was the desire of the board. We would never dream of altering anybody's creative work without discussion.
Dr. Otho, you have any comments you would like to add tonight?
No, when I was told that you would be considering it tonight, I was very honored, humbly honored about the proposal. So, whatever your decision is.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, sir.
I read the poem and I appreciate all the work that went into it and I'm definitely not opposed to it. I just had one question. At the very end, it refers to in 2016, we launched our celebration with the bicentennial being mentioned. You know, if we're looking at the title, is this something else that might be considered?
This, would you like?
Yes, Dr. Otho.
We were celebrating the bicentennial of Oxford. That was the occasion for the poem.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why it ends with bicentennial. It was written for that purpose, to celebrate Oxford's bicentennial.
So Commissioner Bullock, are you wondering about, if we were going to adopt this as the city's official poem? Are you wondering whether those two lines in there should remain in it? Is that what your question is?
Yes, I understand why they were put in there and have no problem with that. I was just saying, looking ahead to be an official poem of the city, would that sort of, you know, limited in a sense of date? Just a question.
Right, so, Dr. Otho, we'll get back to you in a minute. I see Commissioner Fields has something to say.
In, in response to Commissioner Bullock, I, I think the meeting in the year of the conception of the poem and the purpose of the poem having been written would give future historians and the, the, the knowledge of when it was written and why it was written and what it was celebrating. That's my concept of the date.
Okay.
Good point.
Dr. Otho, do you have anything that you would like to add in comment to that?
No, it was a tribute to Oxford on its bicentennial. I think that was the original title, was it?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And I think that's why the title should remember. That's part of the history of Oxford. That's why we gave it that title.
Right, and we all understand that. I think the discussion is if the motion is to adopt this as the official poem for the city of Oxford, it no longer would be tied only to the bicentennial celebration. It would be, and I think that was Louis Bowling's commentary in his letter was that there, your poem covers this tremendous breadth of history for Oxford that stands independently of its, independently of the bicentennial. And, and I think that's the question that Commissioner Bullock was saying is that I, and of course, Commissioner Fields offers up a different way of looking at it, but the, the thinking is if it's going to be the official poem for Oxford from here on in, is the reference in the title and in the last, next to the last stanza to the, the bicentennial, is that necessary? Because it's taking on a new form. It's evolving from being a poem for the bicentennial tribute to a trib, a general tribute to the city of Oxford. Did I capture that correctly? I can't ask Mr. Lewis about this or Bowling, but.
We would hope that, we would hope that the celebration of Oxford bicentennial would be for perpetuity, perpetually. Because we crossed a great milestone to have served for 200 years. I think that in itself speaks for Oxford, I would hope.
Oh, true.
Okay. So, yes, Commissioner Toby.
Well, I've got, I'd like to put a motion that we accept the poem as written.
Okay. Any further discussion on Commissioner Toby's motion? Okay, then I will start with Mayor Pro Tem. What say you? Okay, look, and I'm not even on the right page to mark my things, okay? Commissioner Gilreath? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Curran?
Aye.
Commissioner Toby?
Aye.
Commissioner Bridges?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And, Dr. Otho, yes, there you are. We thank you for your willingness to entertain this and for your creative efforts four years ago in honor of our bicentennial. We appreciate that. And I thank all of the board for your discussion on this. And Oxford may be, when there was a question asked at our agenda meeting when I brought this up last week, as to whether there are other cities that have official poems, and I asked Louis Bowling if he knew, but he did not, and said, but that there is nothing wrong with Oxford becoming the first city to have an official poem. So, now we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Otho. We appreciate that. And at this time, we will move forward to our added item. We have two items. One of them is Commissioner Curran's discussion. The other one is the information that we received from Mary Yount, our Downtown Development Director, that the North Carolina Institute for Emerging Issues is offering the city of Oxford $5,000 in relief funding to leverage the Internet Accessibility and Digital Literacy Training through the BAND NC Rapid Relief Grant. The funding will be used to advance digital inclusion by offering free Wi-Fi access within downtown Oxford. New term. Thank you. Offering free Wi-Fi access within downtown Oxford and limited surrounding areas through Open Broadband, a county partner offering broadband services. The Downtown Development Director is working with the Granville County Library and Vance Granville Community College on implementation of digital literacy training. staff recommends accepting the memorandum of understanding for grant funding in the amount of $5,000 to provide Internet accessibility through Open Broadband to provide free Wi-Fi within downtown Oxford and limited surrounding areas, which is what our Housing Authority Director spoke to earlier, the hope with some help and getting additional boost to getting service out to Oxford Housing Authority. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Curran?
Aye.
Commissioner Toby?
Aye.
Commissioner Bridges?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Okay, that mass, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we proceed.
Mayor, can I add something quickly?
Yes, please.
I'd like to add something in regards to that. I don't want any of the individuals watching this or zooming in to get the cart before the horse on this. Mary and I have been talking about how to get Wi-Fi downtown for quite some time, and this opportunity came, and she pursued it. And I really want to thank you, to Mary, for her effort in applying for and being successful in this initiative. But I think most of you probably understand that in order to accomplish that task, you know, there are a number of logistical issues that have to be worked out behind the scenes, and we are working on those currently. I'm sure everybody is probably aware of the effort of Granville, Warren, and I believe Vance County. I can't remember the other one, maybe Franklin County. No, it was Vance County, because Franklin County tried to get in, in trying to expand broadband throughout the region and selecting a contractor consultant, which is Open Broadband, who have done some significant work in getting us closer to that. Essentially, what I'm attempting to convey to you is the fact that in order to accomplish this task, there are certain steps that have to be taken, including the positioning of some array on our downtown water tank. That means that the company that we utilize for a communications management is involved in this. I have been trying to get Open Broadband to communicate with us more closely. Mr. Worthing was in on a conference call that was between myself, Open Broadband, the county manager, and the Economic Development Director, oh, a month, a month and a half ago. And we're still trying to get all of the stars lined up to get Open Broadband to provide us with schematics of essentially what they would need to put on the water tank. So it's in the works, I guess is probably the best way that I can put it. So if we're hoping to have Wi-Fi at the Housing Authority or downtown tomorrow, don't show up standing out there with your phone held up in the air, I guess. But we are working on it, and the $5,000 is certainly a significant step in paying for the cost of that. Another part of this will be our communications management company negotiating with Open Broadband about the placement of the apparatus on our tower and what that entails and what the city should receive for that, because they're not doing it for free. I mean, they're coming in this area in order to extend their Internet service and expand their footprint, so to speak, and provide that service. And in order to do that, they need partners. We're one of their partners. So part of that whole process is negotiating with them to get as good a deal as we possibly can. But there will be some cost in that, and we believe that the $5,000 will pay for, hopefully, more than a year of the cost of that. So again, I want to say thank you to Mary for her efforts in that. And, you know, it's one of those things that the board wanted to see happen. And we're certainly a larger step closer to it with having some funding now.
Bravo, Mary. Thank you very much. I apologize for not mentioning that early, but we, earlier. We certainly do appreciate that. And we will just all remain exceedingly prayerful that your conversations, Mr. Thornton with Open Broadband and getting the specifics about, because as I understand it, so you need information from Open Broadband about exactly what they need to be able to mount on the tower so that you can send that to your third-party manager who can evaluate whether it, we actually have the capacity to accommodate that. And am I correct in understanding they also need to co-locate two antennas? One to accommodate free broadband Wi-Fi downtown and another one that would be for affordable paid service for people in the area? Is that correct?
Most likely, most likely, yes, ma'am. But again, we've requested those schematics. I have in writing, and the telecommunications management company that we have working for us has done that as well. To my knowledge at this point, neither one of us has gotten a response. I have a managers' meeting tomorrow afternoon. The county will be there, and the county and the city will be having some conversation about that and how to move that forward, because my last conversation with the county manager was that they were having a few issues with Open Broadband as well. So we'll be having that conversation tomorrow about how to break through a little bit of the impasse.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you again, Mary, for your work to secure that funding. That's just awesome news, and we all appreciate it. And so now we go to Commissioner Curran, who requested that we add a discussion about the intersection at Forest and Parker Streets and Forest and Tranquil Streets with multiple stop signs. So take it away, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I've been approached by several people that live in the area that are concerned for their safety, and me included, the high rate of speed of traffic on Forest Road and also other streets in the neighborhood. Not wanting speed bumps, and the police cannot be here all the time. So it looks to me like the most logical way would be the additional stop signs. They've been done in some other locations in town, and it seems to work good. So I would like to see how we would proceed to get that done.
Where is Parker Street?
Parker comes, runs from Spring Street in front of Crawford Knott's house down by the swimming pool and comes out on, it's where High turns to Forest.
Okay, so right there at the, at the corner.
Right.
Okay.
And then the other location would be...
Is that where you want the stop sign to go, right there at that corner?
That would make that a three-way stop.
Okay.
And then Tranquil and Forest would make that a four-way stop.
So that in Tranquil and Forest is right up the next intersection, correct?
The next intersection, right.
Right. So it's basically before you start the downhill or on your way, and then back at the, at the rise where you turn into Green Acres.
At Weir Place, right behind Weir Place.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, where Parker is.
That's correct.
The three-way, right, the three-way, okay, I'm with you.
Excellent. Other, other questions? Or should we ask the manager to speak to this? Mr. Toby, Commissioner Toby?
Yes, I, I agree with Danny about the Forest and Parker. That is an extremely dangerous turning as you're coming out of Parker to turn onto Forest, because you cannot see around the hill. And it's, the cars do come down there very fast. It's very difficult junction there. I think we really do need a stop sign there.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bullock?
I would agree with the Forest and Parker. And I know I've seen people speeding in front of our houses, Danny's and mine and all, but do we need two blockages like that, one block apart? The more people got a stop...
And then Parker, that's, you know, block apart.
It's only a block, but they can't get up much speed if they got to stop twice.
I think, Commissioner Fields, are you, are you trying to speak? Or are you mess, okay, okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Manager, do you want to make any comments about this?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I'm not going to bring my personal feelings into this. I live at the top of High Street and sit on my porch quite frequently, so I see what comes out and goes into that area at a rather high rate of speed quite, quite frequently. But I would, if it is the pleasure of the board, I would recommend that this be referred to a Public Safety Committee meeting. And in the meantime, I will have the Chief of Police do a little study on it and put together a recommendation in preparation for that Public Safety Committee meeting, taking into consideration Commissioner Curran's request and objectives in order to reduce speed in that area, because it is certainly quite prevalent. So if that is the pleasure of the board after any continued discussion, we'll certainly be glad to, to schedule that.
Excellent. Any, any further comments? And that's what I was thinking is, when we've had discussions like this in the past, my, you know, it's usually that we get some input from the Police Department of their assessment of the situation. And sometimes I think, you know, Commissioners Curran and Bullock and Harris can speak to this, that I have, maybe sometimes we've even had some input from the Streets Department, depending on the angle and, and placement of signs. But anyway, is there any discussion from any other members of the board regarding this? And the refer, the potential referral to the Chief and Public Safety Committee? And Commissioner Fields?
I, I would be real pleased to see that go forward with the referral and the public safety, because I would hate for any John Q. Public to come to our next meeting and say, well, they got stop signs on their street that quick without, without us following all steps to show that it was a thought-through process and not, not done just because a commissioner brought it to the board, and the commissioner happens to live in that vicinity, to, to have it cross our Ts and dot our Is on this. Because I feel like if that's the case, we've got citizens on every street that could come to us and really justify why they need more stop signs or, or some speed deterrent method, so...
And I agree with you, Commissioner Field. And if, if any one of them would contact me, I will bring it to board.
Yes.
Because it's, it's a problem all over town.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Bringing the problem that's been brought to my attention.
It is, it is. Even on my little short street. I don't know what we could do, but, you know. But I want to make sure that we, as a board, have everything justifiable in the future.
Yeah, and, and I just want to add to the comments. Actually, there are four commissioners that live over there, Pat.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, hey, look, but I do, when Commissioner Bullock made the comment about the short distance, you know, from Parker to, you know, the next block.
Tranquil.
That's certainly something that came to my mind. That does seem like a short distance for another stop sign to be. But I do agree with Commissioner Curran, because a lot of people walk, you know, in the area. And, and so I, I do think there's some safety issues. I'm not sure that two stop signs at both of those locations is necessary, but, you know, certainly open to discussion.
Okay, excellent. Any further commentary?
Thank you.
Then, do we need, I'm not sure we actually mean to make a motion to refer to Public Safety Committee, but should we do a thumbs up with who's, you're good with referring to the Police Chief and Public Safety Committee? And Kwan, am I correct in thinking you're our Public Safety Committee Chair? So how about if, would you work with the manager? Because I think we need to give the chief the time that he needs with his staff to assess the situation. There's probably no point in setting a committee meeting until he's ready with something to present to the committee. So I'll leave it to you and the manager and the chief to work that out and then keep the rest of us informed. Does that work? Okay.
That works, that works.
Excellent. Commissioner Curran, do you have anything further that you would like to say about this at this time?
No, no, that's good.
Okay, excellent. Well, I really appreciate this discussion. It's been great in every respect. Let me go back to my agenda. And we are now at the consent agenda, which is simply to accept the September Finance Report by our Finance Director and approve the minutes from August 31st, agenda meeting September 8th, regular meeting, September 23rd, special meeting, and October 7th, special meeting. And so what is the pleasure of my board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion? Okay, I do that. My roll call, starting next to me on the screen, Commissioner Gilreath? Are you there? Commissioner Fields?
Yay.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes. Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem, there you are. Oh, my heavens to Betsy, this is the first time I've seen your face in, it feels like five months. Oh, it was just a moment.
I mean, you know, first time I seen him in a long time.
In a long time, that's what you call low profile, the I.
There you go, there you go. Okay, so the I's have it, seven to none. And with that, I'll ask for a commentary from any members of the board, and I'll start with you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you all so much tonight for the dialogue. It has been very a trying time for everyone over the last couple of months. I would like to take, thank the city staff for all their hard work. I would like to thank the manager for all of his hard work, working with a budget that is difficult, we're experiencing a pandemic. They have re-absorbed all of our resources. I don't know anyone who has not been affected by technically, physically, and emotionally. But the work of the city still goes on and I would like to thank the manager for that as well as the town because our, I mean, excuse me, as our city employees, because our city has remained clean and it has run effectively without any operation stopped. Thank you all to my colleagues tonight for the spirited dialogue in regard to the recreation master plan. I hope that we can reach an agreement soon with that because I look forward to it one day that we will have a pool downtown accessible to everyone in the city limits. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner, I'm going to go backwards because he's at the bottom. So Commissioner Curran, anything else to add?
No, I don't have anything else.
Commissioner Bullock?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Bridges?
I too, thank everyone for the spirited discussion. And even with the pandemic and us having to Zoom these meetings, I have been very impressed with everybody's participation. You know, it's much better when we're together in a room, but, you know, I think we're doing good under the circumstances and wish everybody well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Tovey?
Yes, I have, I've been approached by two different, three different people about two different subjects this week. And two of them is an old news, it's the water bills. Timothy Darling Church, they received a very high bill, although the church was closed. And the same with the hair salon downtown, the hair salon was closed and yet they received a higher bill than normal. And I was just wondering whether maybe the water department could go and check the meters, check whether there's leaks or something because it doesn't seem right that you should get a higher bill when you're not using any water. And the other thing was I was approached about, and this I think for maybe Dud could look at, there's a couple of new trees that were planted along Main Street that maybe need stakes in them. Someone said that they really need stakes in them. I don't know whether that can be looked at. Dud Fraser could look at that maybe, but that's all I have, if the water department can look at those. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Piggybacking on previous commissioner's comment, I would like to really thank Dr. Otho for having the insight four years ago to sit down and pen such an awesome poem about the city of Oxford and the county of Granville. And also, I'm very proud to be a member of a board that will be the first in something that is extremely positive, a poem dedicated to our ancestors. It, it, in this time of COVID, seems like everything that's coming out is very negative and detrimental, but this to me, to me is uplifting, is letting our citizens know that we are, even though we're in a time that none of us have ever experienced, we're looking to the future, we're leaving things that can be very positive for the future residents to look back and read and realize that we had, we, we were still thinking about tomorrow even though today is cloudy. Also, I would like to thank the entire city staff, as Mayor Pro Tem said, our city beauty is being very well maintained. The trucks are coming out picking up debris sort of spontaneously around here. They've got to come and see me tomorrow. I had a pecan tree that said some of her, her big limbs needed to come down and scare me to death. But thanks to everybody for having Oxford at the forefront of your heart and your thoughts. And every, everything we do may not please everybody, but we're doing it for the love of the city.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And last but not least, Commissioner Gilry?
Well, just wanted to update the committee on the Greenway Council had a meeting on October the 8th. And I'm thinking maybe there's a new company coming to town, Black Ox?
They're already here.
Already here. Well, they were also talking about them possibly wanting to have some bike trails. And I thought to myself, oh, that's pretty cool. And they were looking at how to incorporate that into our Greenway. And so I was just curious, you know, how, how will that play out for us as well as where are we with regards to us adopting this statewide connective Greenway system? Everyone else had nice stuff to report and I felt a little left out. I, I didn't have anything to add to, to, to what we're doing. So are we?
With Commissioner Fields, do you have, are you waving at me or?
From, from the last, from my end, ending of being on Oxford Greenway, our last phase were, was the continuation of our sidewalks on Industry Drive, which we have not gotten into that phase of completion. But that's what the city of Oxford was doing, is our continuation to connect our sidewalks from the walk, the walk pass, Raleigh Street to Lewis Street.
So going down Industry Drive?
Going down Industry Drive.
Burger King?
Yeah.
Past the Burger King? Oh.
Yeah.
Well, that's a short little distance.
We, we're, we're, when I got out, when, you know, when my tenure was up, we were completing phase one of that project.
Okay. Okay, well, then I need to update this committee then, so we have done something. Thank you.
And, and you might want to have a little conversation with our planning director, Cheryl Hart.
Yes.
See if she has anything more in the hopper. I think in the past year, you know, the city has been so aggressive with utility work that maybe we've not been as focused on securing funding for, for Greenway work. But I think if you have a conversation with our planning director, she may have more to add.
Okay, and I did, I did share where our focus was.
Excellent.
And I'll be sure to get with Cheryl. Thank you.
And there, am I correct in thinking there is still, there is a questionnaire out? Did you see that from the North Carolina Parks and Trails folks to get input on how people feel about greenways and trails and so on? Was that discussed in your meeting?
Hmm, no. It, it wasn't discussed.
Okay. So maybe, I, I don't know if they're still open for input.
Well, well, they did talk about Triangle Trails Initiative. It says 14 county trails with Initiative 501(c) three grants by Mike, Michael McFattensett talked about it, well, was opposed to talk about it. Maybe that's what the problem was. I don't think he was on the call.
And, and I think I'm, but I haven't received any, I've been appointed to that group to represent the county, but I've not received any information about any meetings yet with them. So maybe, maybe that's a communication thing. So I'll, I'll see what I can find out about that. Okay, thank you very much for bringing that up. And lastly, the only thing I wanted to say is that I don't know if you all saw in the ledger or any other outreach, because I think we got some outreach from the county about the opportunity to tour the new animal shelter, which is out on New Commerce Drive located, co-located with the law enforcement center. And I was able to get out there today before our meeting tonight because they had tours Friday, yesterday, and today. And it's wonderful. And it is just, and Matt Katz, who is the director, he's not going to be there for the rest of this week. They're going to be moving animals in on Monday. But he said if anybody is interested in, in touring the facility, please feel free to give them a call and he would be happy to set something up. It looks, it's, it will make you very proud that our board of, I believe, that our board of commissioners voted to wrap that into the project out with the law enforcement center because it is, it is just such a much better place for the animals. There's more room, they can accommodate more. They've worked really, really hard to decrease their euthanasia and they, with the work they've done with cats, he said when he came on board, I guess it was six years ago, they were killing 1,100 cats a year and now it's like down to 40. So they're really doing great work and he seems like he's on top of his game. And I highly encourage you to get out and, and take a peek if you're interested. It's something to be proud of. And with that, Mr. Manager, anything you would like to add?
Just very quickly, I hope everybody got the flyer today in regards to our employee appreciation luncheon, the week of Thanksgiving. I hope you notice that it's going to be a little different this year in, in the year of COVID. So we won't be, you know, coming in, sitting down, shaking hands, hugging and kissing and doing all those kind of things. We still want you to come and, you know, get a meal and say thank you to as many folks as you can from at least six feet of distance, but we do want you to come. I think that is scheduled for the 24th, I think, off the top of my head. So there you go. So please do come. And next time when you start talking about euthanizing cats, you might want to give it some forewarnings so that Commissioner Bullock can hit mute and the cat behind him doesn't hear that. And it's a beautiful.
I'm so sorry.
A dog, it's a cat.
But your cat, cat, I'm so sorry. I just was so, he knocked my socks off when he told me about the improvements. I just couldn't believe it. It was just, it was amazing. So I apologize.
It is definitely a tremendous improvement for Granville and City of Oxford, both the law enforcement center and the animal control shelter, tremendous compared to what we had. So that's all I've got this evening.
Okay, that's great. Yes, Ms. Bowen?
Mary Yount asked me to announce that on November the 11th at 11 o'clock, down here at the memorial, will be a Veterans Day tribute. Mask and social distancing rules apply.
Oh, great, thank you. So no parade this year, Mary? Okay?
No. No, ma'am. The discussion was with the Granville County Veterans Affairs Group and they did not feel comfortable with their veterans coming and participating, even in a reverse parade. We, we made a couple of recommendations and they did not feel comfortable with that. So we are partnering with Oxford's Post 90 to work with them and do this tribute in conjunction with them on that particular day.
That's great, thank you. And thank you for giving us more information about that. You know, when you think about it and there are a number that are, are frail and we certainly wouldn't want anything to happen to anybody. So thank you for, for that information. That's great. I need, yes, sir?
Just to confirm with Post 90, Mayor Collegium working with Mary, we will not have any kind of a celebration at the post, which we typically do. We're just going to join together on this.
Okay, that's, that, you know, these are unusual times and they require of us an ability to think outside the box. And I think the best thing that we can do for our community is to bend to that need and accommodate in whatever way we can and to be understanding of everybody and the work that they're trying to do to make things feel normal. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mary. Any last comments from anybody? Okay, well then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Pat Fields? Any discussion? Okay, then I'm going to take the role, Mayor Pro Tem.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gilry?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for your time and your energy. Godspeed, be safe and sound, keep everybody and your family safe and sound till we meet again. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.